Okay, Mayor, I show 7:00 PM, so just give me a moment and I will start the live process.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. I will call the February 10th regular City Council meeting to order. Steve, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk Van, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, February 14th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Very second.
Okay, I see a motion by Bruins, a second by Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye. Next item, please.
The next item is presentations. Number four is the introduction of City Manager Ashley J. Feeney.
So tonight, we are honored to have Ash Feeney sworn in to his role as City Manager. And I'm going to offer some brief remarks before we get started with this. Tonight swearing in of Mr. Feeney as City Manager is a true celebration and a mark of a new chapter in our city. We are thrilled to have him with us and we're looking forward to his future leadership and we know that the city is in great hands under his leadership. Amy, if you could issue the oath?
Yes, I will now administer the oath of office. Okay, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I..." Please state your name.
I, Ashley Feeney.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any... Excuse me. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties that I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Applause around.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for those kind comments and counsel for the warm welcome and the time that you've been spending with me as I've been new into my role as City Manager here. It's been a terrific first couple of weeks. We have an excellent staff team that I've been getting to know, been out in the community, getting to know our terrific community members as well as our businesses, and looking forward to continuing in further getting to know the community and providing service and contributions to the community. So thank you very much. I appreciate this and it's an honor to serve as City Manager.
If I could, Mayor, just a couple of words real quick. Just welcome, Ash. We're very happy to have you. And I can't tell you how happy it made me that you kind of flubbed the oath. We worry about anybody that makes it through without any mistakes, and so all of us flubbed the oath and good job. Glad to have you.
A word of welcome as well. It's an exciting time for all of us and looking forward to the new chapter into your leadership, Ash, and looking forward to getting to know you better and to hear your perspectives on things that we have been dealing with for a long time and on things that are new to us this year. So, welcome.
Ditto. Dan, glad to have you aboard. Welcome, Ash.
Yes, and I... It's a shame we all can't be there to see this, you see, you take the oath in person, but most welcome, sir.
Wonderful. Thanks. Next item, please.
The next item is presentation number five, City of Citrus Heights proclamation, recognizing the month of February as Black History Month.
So, information here, I'm going to just read a little bit of it. You know, we have all the whereasses, but there are some critical things that I think we should really be aware of here in Citrus Heights. The City of Citrus Heights' strength and distinction can be attributed to the diversity of cultures and traditions that are celebrated by our residents. And Citrus Heights has been seen as the positive impacts of African-American leaders, including former councilmembers James Shelby, the late Melvin Turner, former City Manager Henry Tingle. Therefore, it be resolved, the City Council of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the month of February 2022 as Black History Month and invite everyone to recognize this month to celebrate the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of our sharing culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. And sign by my hand. Next item, please.
The next item is presentation number six, recognition of the Public Services, Republic Services Annual Recycle Poster Contest winners.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Anna Malone with Republic Services, and I'm really excited to be here tonight not to talk about state mandates or president cases or anything like that, but to talk about some amazing students that you have in your city and in your school district. So, I'm not presenting today, but first I would like to introduce someone to you who will be presenting. The gentleman who will be speaking tonight is Mr. Ray Robinson. He is a new hire at Republic Services. He's the new municipal administrator on my municipal team working out of the background of Transportation Office, and he is helping me manage our four municipal contracts that we oversee, including, of course,
The contract?
...that provides resources for all of the homes in Citrus Heights. So I'm going to have to, right? I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Hopefully I don't mess up and show you guys all of my background stuff on my computer. Give you one moment.
Well, Anna is doing that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, everyone else. I'm really happy to be here. Excited to be working with Citrus Heights and Republic Services. Still new, so I'm learning everything, but we've been working with Mary here on this presentation and we're really excited to show you guys the winners from 2021.
Okay, Anna, you guys sharing the justice presentation?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
I can see it. I'm having trouble hearing you. Is your microphone covered up?
All right, so Citrus Heights and Republic Services, this is our annual poster contest from 2021. Again, this is hosted by Republic Services, your residential garbage and recycling services provider for Citrus Heights in partnership with San Juan Unified School District and Citrus Heights schools, teachers, and students. The poster contest is for the students in the Citrus Heights schools as well as students living in Citrus Heights, and the grades are K through 8. So this contest, again, was for elementary, middle school, and K through 8 schools. We had a total of eight participating schools. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing 13 student winners, including one grand prize student winner and the school with the most student participation. So this past year, we split the prompt into two different ones, one for K through 3rd and ones for 4th through 8th. The one for K through 3rd was, why is it important to recycle? For 4th through 8th, the prompt was, show us how you make less waste using the four Rs: reduce, reuse, recycle, and rot. So, starting with Grand Oaks Elementary, we had one winner there. Lillian C. in the 1st grade. She shows us that when we recycle, we reduce the trash that is littered and save our sea life. Next school is Kingswood, K through 8, one winner at this school. We had Laura C. in the 3rd grade. She breaks down what we should and should not put into our recycling containers, and using the four Rs will save the planet. At Lykan, K through 8, we had four winners. Luciana V. in the 2nd grade has the recycle sign in a container in the middle symbolizing that recycling is at the center of protecting our world. Next is Brooklyn R. in the 8th grade, spells out the four Rs and reminds us that pollution is not a solution. Danielle S. in the 8th grade focuses on reducing by reusing items and choosing paper over plastic bags whenever possible. Christian T. in kindergarten. Here we see the negative consequences of not recycling because it can pollute our sea and land environments. Next school, Sylvan Middle, we had one winner there. Fernanda Z. in the 8th grade shows us how employing the four Rs can decrease waste that produces toxins into the atmosphere. At Carrot Drive Elementary, we had one winner. Ruby J. in the 1st grade shows us that it's important to recycle because trash left at the beach will get the animals sick. At Mariposa Avenue Elementary, we had one winner. Madison W. in the 4th grade shows us that we should make less waste by remembering not to be mean. You can keep the earth green by using those four Rs. At Skycrest Elementary, we had two winners. Sitlolly B. in the 4th grade. We love the direct call to action here by Roxy the Unicorn. Using the four Rs is cool and easy and not to mention great for the environment. Lucas B. in the 4th grade shows robbing food scraps in the backyard garden for worms and creating good soil for the garden box. Is great for the environment and for your vegetables if you're growing them in the backyard. Woodside, K through 8, we had two winners. Milana D. in the 4th grade. She has a great suggestion here to reduce by adopting a minimalist mentality. And our grand prize winner, Francisco R. in the 5th grade shows us how being a champion for recycling will help us reduce waste. Treat each opportunity to reduce waste like it's the last second shot. And the most participation of our schools, we had Lykan, K through 8, with four winners. So congratulations to all the winners in the schools. Thank you so much for participating. We want to thank the Citrus Heights City Council and city staff for judging the San Juan Unified School District and the participating schools listed below. And we're really excited to continue teaching our youth about recycling, especially the rot aspect as we are heading into SB 1383, and I promise I won't talk anymore about it because Anna agreed as well. So, thank you all. Really appreciate you allowing me to present tonight, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you for that presentation. I know that every year we have to do this. There are so many wonderfully talented students and it's so difficult to pick, you know, who our favorites are. I know I had more than, more than 13 for sure. Okay, next item.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay. Jeannie, what have you been up to?
Well, let's see. We did not have a sanitation board meeting since our last council meeting, so there's nothing to report there. I attended the Chamber of Commerce lunch this week and heard the state of the chamber by new President Ray Ward, and they have a lot of exciting information to share, so stay tuned as they roll out the year. Then, we had a PAL board meeting this week, yesterday, and Commander Fry was away in training, so I'm the vice president of PAL, so I ran the meeting. The big news is that a week from tomorrow, we have our cornhole contest or tournament, and it's $50 for a team of two, and it's being promoted by the Chamber of Commerce on behalf of PAL. So all of the proceeds go to PAL. I can only tell you that two years ago when we did this, I was surprisingly, had a surprisingly fun time. I didn't know what it would be like. Lots of food, lots of fellowship, lots of networking, just a lot of throwing beanbags at cornhole boards. And so I would encourage you, if you haven't gotten your tickets yet, to do that. The committee is also looking for raffle prizes and silent auction prizes to round out the evening. Also, PAL is scheduling a roller skating event on February 27th. It starts at noon. And if you've got a child who likes to roller skate, this is a great time to give them a few hours of high-energy activity. And let's see, what else? That's pretty much it from PAL. And then we also had, yesterday, we had a finance committee meeting. And so the information from that meeting is very encouraging, and that will be presented to the council at our next meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you very much. Just again, welcome to Ash coming into the city. I had the pleasure today to drive around with Ash for a couple of hours and talk about a lot of the things going on in our city, a lot of positives and negatives that we need to deal with. And I'm very excited about his position on some of those things. And I think that one of the things that will come out of it mostly is that we'll see a cleaner city, and I think that's really important, that we'll make a greater effort in removing blight and whatnot from our city. So I'm very happy about that, and welcome, Ash. Saturday is Abraham Lincoln's birthday, our 16th president. And I just want to challenge parents out there to take a moment and make sure your kids understand the significance of Abraham Lincoln and how he saved our country. And I kind of think we're moving further and further away from the understanding, the significance of some of our leaders at the beginning of the time of our country and whatnot. And then finally, Monday is Valentine's Day, so fellas, don't mess it up. Get out there, and no matter what she says, she wants something. So go, go get something and make your lady happy. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to report. Regional transit, we had our second ad hoc committee meeting on assigning votes to member jurisdictions, and we passed a recommendation for the full board to consider. So nothing set in stone yet. Giving Sac County four votes, that would be one additional vote, but the thinking there is, when we get that light rail across into West Sacramento, they're going to become, maybe not a full member, but a contract member, so we're saving a chair for them. And this will keep the board composition at odd numbers. City of STACK, Sacramento will remain at four votes. Elk Grove will gain a vote because their population to two. And we also recommended that Citrus Heights, Folsom, and Ranch Gero will still have one vote, and we're also recommending that the Sac County and the City of SAC have alternates. The small cities do. Mayor, you're my alternate on regional transit. The only sticking point is whether that person has to be elected or not. And I feel strongly that it should be an elected member, but we'll see how that goes, and I'll report back. And then the last thing I just wanted to say, Jeannie brought up the cornhole tournament. But this Saturday is the Rotary's Crab Feed, and at 5:00 PM at the Community Center, if you don't have tickets, let me know. We can hook you up. But we're expecting a big turnout, and so I'm very excited about that. I haven't been to Crab Feed in two years. I'm hungry. That's it.
Okay. Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. So I didn't have any meetings since our last council meeting. I did get to spend some time with Ash as well, and it was a really good meeting. I think that I'm excited about his joining the city. I do want to just kind of send out kudos to Ray with Republic Services for a great presentation. One of the things that I wanted to mention, and this is really interesting, that when this young lady said, "Stop littering", or, you know, "Stop littering" as part of her theme, and then Brett said, "A cleaner city", I was really disappointed as I was driving down Greenback Lane just in front of the car wash there in San Juan. The brown pickup had a larger-than-average bag of stuff that he just tossed out the window. Just tossed out the window right on the Greenback Lane and turned off and headed up San Juan Road. I don't know, when I was a kid, there was a big campaign going on about not littering. Maybe some of you remember the Indian with the teardrop coming down his face. I think we've gotten away from that. I think people just, it really was, that was a stunning event for me that I just, I found it outrageous that he just tosses trash right out the window. So I hope we can develop a theme, and I would hope that you would all join me in really trying to promote a cleaner Citrus Heights. And so with that, that's, and one other thing that I'm hoping that we can get City Hall open, I think that the date was February 14th to sort of open Citrus Heights up, and I really look forward to meeting all of you in person again. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the finance meeting with Jeannie and the PAL board meeting, and no other meetings this week, but I did make sure that I went and bought my team tickets to the cornhole tournament. I'm going to play with my son, and hopefully I won't put him to shame because I have terrible aim. And that is, that's all I've been up to so far this week. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment. Members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And Mayor, tonight, I do have one written public comment for this portion of the public comment section. I also have a written public comment for the public hearing item on the redistricting process. So I will hold that written public comment until we get to that item. So with that, I will go ahead and read the written public comment. It's from Alfred. It's from Alfred Sanchez, and he states, "Citrus Heights has a bit of Winter Olympics history right here. In January of two thousand and two, several residents participated in the Salt Lake Winter Olympic torch relay. One of the torches carried by resident Alfred Sanz is on display at Citrus Heights City Hall." And that concludes the written public comment, and I do not see any raised hands. So if, I'll move on to the next item.
Yes, thank you.
The next item is consent calendar, and we have consent calendar items seven, eight, nine, and ten.
I would like to poll number ten.
I'll move items seven through nine.
Okay, a motion by Miller, second by Bruins with the, with item number ten being pulled. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
So the next item, consent calendar item number ten, the subject is striping and marking maintenance services, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five award of contract.
And, um, for this, Regina, if you could just give, uh, the public a thirty-second recap of what this is about. Um, I think it's important that folks know about this because it is a problem in our city. And I wasn't aware that we were, had gotten to that point of, um, of, uh, changing, uh, you know, contractors. And so I think that's exciting, uh, because I think this is an area that we're really lacking. But if you could give the public just a, a quick recap of what this is all about and what we're going to be doing.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, the General Services Department is for the operations and maintenance of our public infrastructure. This includes paving and striping maintenance services, not just your, uh, overlays, but day-to-day repairs and maintenance. And so, and then evaluate the services from our existing contractors. We reviewed our existing contracts, felt that it was in need of vamping, and I decided to go out with an RFP and see what the market looks like, see whether the striping contractors are available and solicit proposals from them. So this is routine maintenance. This is separate restripper road following, uh, a brand-new paving project. There's also, um, any kind of enhancements that we do through our management for traffic and pedestrian safety.
Thank you very much. And I would just encourage the public to, um, let us know if there's an area that needs to be done. You know, we have a lot of eyes out there, but we just can't catch everything all the time. So definitely let us know. And with that, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion by Daniels, a second by Miller. A roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Miller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um, next item.
The next item is our public hearing, and because we had scheduled it for a seven-thirty start time, I just wanted to confer to our city attorney if we should, um, wait two minutes, um, to be able to start that public hearing.
This is a timed item. I think we should.
I, I would agree. We, we do need to wait. Unfortunately, we're very close. So if you could either recess in place, probably since we wouldn't have enough time to start another item and come back to it, I would think.
All right, well, we'll recess in place.
Mayor, I do see that it is seven-thirty, so I'll now proceed with our public hearing.
Okay. Please turn it over to our, uh, demographer.
So the public hearing tonight, item number eleven, is on the, it's, this is the first public hearing on the redistricting process. Um, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing to receive public input on the composition of districts for the purpose of redrawing election district boundaries. Um, council will receive a presentation tonight from our, um, demo, demographer. And then the council will set the date for the next public hearing. And Mayor and Council, good evening. Amy Van City Clerk, I just want to introduce the item. Of course, this is the first of four public hearings for the redistricting process. Although the city recently transitioned to districts in two thousand and nineteen, the city is required to update the district boundaries following each federal decennial census. So tonight, I would like to introduce Robert McIntyre with National Demographics Corporation, who will present the overall population changes and an overview of the redistricting process. And I will just bring up the presentation for him, and I will turn it over to him.
Uh, Mayor, council staff, community, it's, it's an honor to be here tonight. As, as you heard, my name is Robert McIntyre with National Demographics. And, and tonight, the goal is to really lay out the process of what redistricting will look like for Citrus, the city of Citrus Heights. And, and so if we could, here on this first slide, you see the existing map, uh, that was selected during the first iteration of the first district, districting process just a couple of years ago. And, and so you're probably going to hear a lot of things in the commi, in the community when you go to the grocery store, like, why are we doing this again? Uh, next slide, please. As you heard from Ms. Van, this is, we're required to do this after the census data is published every ten years. And the reason we have to do that is because we know as our population shift, with, there are certain federal laws we're going to talk about in just about three slides, we have to revisit this and how we have to balance our populations based on the current census. And, and of course, we're, was every ten years because we know those populations shift. And, and so just very briefly, uh, here you see, uh, we're laying out a bit of the timeline. We see that the federal, uh, Census Bureau finished their work in August, uh, twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. Now, that feels like a long time ago. Well, they turned that information over to the state of California to do their work. And the state of California had a couple of hiccups along the way. And so they issued their first set, their twentieth, and it was, it was a bit of a mess, uh, in that they needed to readjust the prisoner data. So instead of recognizing prisoners where they were in, in a prison, they had to allocate them back to the city in which they were residing before being incarcerated. And so that's under California state law, and we didn't get that data till early October. And so when you look, as you can see, that it was just a heartbeat away that the city of Citrus Heights staff engaged in this process. And, and by, by the middle of, middle to the end of January, the city already had a, uh, striking webpage up. Uh, here you see the link to that webpage. Uh, I have to say, it has been an absolute, uh, working with Ms. Van and the city attorney and, and with your, uh, new, uh, city manager. So with that, part of the, what we have to deal with tonight is we have to figure out what the rest of our schedule is going to look like. We're having the first public hearing tonight, and this, this is a required public hearing that has to occur before we discuss, meaning before I draw any new maps or any community members submit maps. Obviously, we can talk about your existing map, and we will do so, but this is that first public hearing requirement. Next. Here, we have a proposed schedule, and on the next slide, we have an alternate proposed schedule. And I am going to need some feedback or consensus from council on which schedule they'd like to follow, because we do have some options and flexibility in this process, but we do have a relatively tight timeline. And so here on this proposed schedule, we're proposing that, uh, that we would have a special public hearing on March third, which I believe is a non-normal cycle board meeting. And the reason we would do it this way is because we want to give a couple of weeks if community members want to look at the table, and if they want to decide to submit their own maps, National Demographics will need time to process those maps. So we would need those back by February twenty-fourth, so they can be available for that second public uh, on March third. The idea that we would already be talking about maps and, and having the pushing around maps with the goal of whittling down and selecting a map. The third public hearing on March tenth, and then and you'd introduce the ordinance, you'd have your final public, here, public hearing on March twenty-fourth and, uh, adopt the ordinance. So this is, this is the proposed schedule. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here's, but we do have an alternative schedule. Um, one of the things that we had talked about was the idea that, uh, we, there was a desire not to have, uh, we wanted to be as transparent as possible, not have any special meetings. So to do all of the public hearings that regularly scheduled, uh, meetings, council meetings. And so that's what we attempt to do with this schedule. And so you can see with this schedule, we have the first public hearing tonight. Once again, we would have a very short window if the, any community members wanted to submit maps of their own. Uh, and we would need, uh, you know, a little time to process those before the second public hearing. Uh, that would be on February twenty-fourth, so we would talk about the existing maps and any maps that the council directs me to draw tonight. By the third public hearing on March tenth, the idea we'd have deliberation, public hearing, and then hopefully select a map and introduce the ordinance. We'd have that fourth required public hearing before the adoption of the ordinance on March twenty-fourth, all beating the April seventeenth statutory deadline. Next slide, please. Now, a big part, the reason we have to have a public hearing that's before we talk about draft maps is because we want to make sure that everybody's speaking the same language. And so part of this process is building that vocabulary, so that way people in the community know as much as you elected, as professional electeds, you, you have a greater understanding typically than the average community member. And so the goal tonight is to help lay the foundation, so we can speak the same language about the same things. And so when we talk about drawing maps, we have to follow the criteria you see here from most important on the left side of the slide, the federal laws. Then we have the state laws. They would be secondary importance to the federal laws. And then you have other traditional districting requirements that are optional, but very common in drawing maps. And so looking at that federal laws, we see the first one, equal population. That means when we look at your city, we have to draw council districts that are roughly equal in population. Specifically, when we talk about roughly an equal population, what we're saying is the most overpopulated council district compared to the most underpopulated council district, the delta between the two cannot be more than ten percent of the ideal size council district. And, and that is why when we talk about population balancing and the requirements do this, a redistricting every ten years, th- this is really what's driving that ten-year provision, because we can't grossly underpopulate a district that we know is going to have a housing development put in that takes us out from this equal population balancing, that ten percent max. And so that's why it's just, it's very difficult for, sometimes for people to understand that, well, we know they're going to grow. And yes, for eight years out of the ten, they may be subs, that, that one district that has a housing complex that came online may be substantially larger, but we'll adjust at the next decennial election or census. Uh, we have to make sure that we follow the Federal Voting Rights Act and that we don't gerrymander. And, and gerrymandering is a term that gets used very often when somebody doesn't like a map. There are two types of gerrymandering, gerrymandering, there's political and there's racial, uh, or ethnic. And, and, and we're not, you, we're not drawing maps, uh, that do either. In fact, we're not using any political data when we're drawing our maps at NDC. But we do want people to understand there is, there are two actual legal definitions of gerrymandering, so racial and political. There's no racial gerrymandering. Coincidentally, the state law says no, uh, political gender, gerrymandering. So we get into the, number two, the California criteria for cities. When we draw council districts, they have to be geographically contiguous. Well, what does that mean? Just imagine I have a rectangle of a district. I mean, your, your council looks like really neat vertical rectangles, probably one of the cleanest maps I've ever seen. Uh, but, uh, geographically contiguous means we can't have one council district split another one into two. Uh, so that way, that other council district is two broken pieces. They're not touching each other. So we need them to be geographically contiguous. We also want to do the best we can to keep communities of interest together. Now, we have to do that within the confines of roughly equal population. So as we put as many neighborhoods together as we can, we have to recognize that when we're creating council districts around the edges, we are going to end up breaking up some minor communities. We just want to be as conscious to where community breaks are when we're building our communities of interest within our council districts. Next, we want to make sure that our, our, our boundary lines for council districts are easily identifiable. So think of those major roadways or, or highways or arteries or, uh, railroad tracks or, or, uh, rivers that would, would form boundaries that people could identify and, and clearly point to on a map. And then separately, we want to have council districts that are compact. And what we mean by that is we don't want to draw a council district where you have a finger reaching way across the map to grab one group of voters at the expense of voters that are closer by. And, and so that's, you know, that, that's very often what gets labeled as, as gerrymandering. And, and so not the case in the definition of compact, but we want to, we want to try to keep as close to what we'd call a circle as we can within the, uh, unnatural shapes of our jurisdictions. And then finally, on the Fair Maps Act, uh, the state law says that we shall not favor or discriminate a political party or candidate. And so we don't draw maps that, that, you know, protect a candidate based on, uh, politics or based on party. Now separately from the federal and state law, we have these traditional districting requirements. And so, for example, when I'm drawing maps, I do the best I can, meeting all these other criteria to respect the will, the will of the voters in the last election. So since the voters put you as electeds in office, they should choose whether you stay or go. So I do my best not to pair council members when I'm drawing council maps. Uh, also, if we have, uh, voters who are, for example, expecting to vote in two thousand and twenty-two, and we shift the boundary lines and that pushes them into two thousand and twenty-four, we want to minimize the number of people that that would happen to, uh, because we don't want people to feel disenfranchised. This doesn't meet the definition of disenfranchisement, but it, it still doesn't feel good. And we want to minimize the number of people that could happen to. Now, some of the things we can consider are future population growth within that ten percent variance boundary. And of course, preserving the core of the existing districts. That's, you know, people are used to things one way. We want to keep things as consistent as possible. Next slide, please. We, we, we do, as we look at your current map using the two thousand and twenty census data. Interestingly enough, uh, your total population at this is eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty people. These are all people, not, not citizens, not people over eighteen, it's people of all ages. And so that means, because we have to use total population for council district sizes, and there are five council districts, each can be seventeen thousand, five people. And so we look at the total population within, in each of the council districts, you see that the variation is quite small. In fact, the, the district one, it's underpopulated by four hundred and ninety-five people, or roughly two percent. And we go over to district three, it's overpopulated by five hundred and thirty-six people, or roughly three point oh five percent. So this, three are the highest, most under, their highest overpopulated. Add the absolute value of those numbers together. It's one thousand thirty-one people, or five point eight percent. That means your existing map is legally compliant and could theoretically be selected if the council Some of the other criteria we look at are the citizen voting age population. This is where we look to see if historically marginalized voters did a way that would maximize or a district where they could, where these historically marginalized voters could elect a person of their choosing, where they could reach a majority. When we go into the next slides, I'm going to show why that's very difficult. And it's, it's, it's actually for a pretty good reason in my mind. Uh, next slide, please. So one of the things we look at when we're trying to see can, uh, historically marginalized voters be put together in a district where they can be a majority, is, is, are they geographically isolated? Are they put, are they, do they choose to live in areas that are rather compact? So we could draw a council district that accomplishes that. And here you see the Latino citizen voting age population concentrations by voting block. And so where it's purple, that means there's a low percentage of Latino citizen voting age population. And where you work your way across the color spectrum up to red, that's a high citizen voting age population block. Now, uh, some blocks have a lot of people and some have a few, but what you see is the blocks in Citrus Heights are spread out for, for Latino voters. So it's very difficult to draw or impossible, in fact, to draw a council district where Latinos would have a citizen voting age majority. Next slide, please. Here we have the Asian-American and Pacific Islander citizen voting age population. And here again, we see they're spread throughout the city and lack really any concentrations that would impact voting outcomes, uh, or the ability for Asian-American and Pacific Islanders to elect a person of their choosing. Next slide, please. Similarly, with African-Americans, uh, we don't see great concentrations, uh, a very small pocket. Uh, a very small pocket, uh, concentrated near uh, Sunrise Boulevard in the southeast, but not a large number. Of African American people, uh, so uh, you know, one block that's not very densely populated. Uh, they're in yellow. And, and so, you know, what that means to me is, is, you know, when we see people spread out. Geographically across a jurisdiction. Typically, that means that people feel safe living anywhere in the jurisdiction. That, that, that's often something to celebrate. Uh, I'll, I'll leave the, the whether or not that statement is true to you, to, to you and the viewers. But that is very often what we see when we see this in certain maps. Next slide, please. Another way that we can look at your map from a policy discussion scenario, since there wasn't great. Diversity with historically marginalized groups is we can look at things like socioeconomic demographics. So here we're looking at the people, the percentage of the population whose household income is over seventy-five thousand dollars. And so for example, we see, or in this case, it's renters. So we're looking at the proportion of renters in, in the popi- population. So for example, in the very northeast portion of the map in the top of district two. We see that less than twenty-five percent of the people in the northeast corner of district two are renters. But we come down a little further south and on the south edge of district two and on the east edge of district five. We see that more than seventy-five percent of the people who live in that area are renters. And so, uh, you know, socioeconomic. Diversity can also play in not only to uh, governance, uh, but and, and the uh. You know, the use of resources often is weighed very heavily by maps like this. And so these are other considerations that the council can choose to. Use when forming the policy decision around their map boundaries. Next slide, please. So part of what we're hoping to do tonight is hear from your community. That's why it's a public hearing. And we want to hear two things. First. What is your neighborhood? And, and here you see, we give you some examples of, of how you might geographic, what geographic boundaries you might use to define your neighborhood. Uh, and so we're hoping to hear from people in the community about this tonight. Next slide, please. We're also hoping to hear about communities of interest, communities of interest. They may be geographic, but they tend to be more shared on uh, a local interest, as, as local topic of interest. It could be things like social or economic interest or policies. I can tell you, I used to uh. Live, I, when I was commuting to and from work, I used to pass a metro link rail track and, and it seemed like for about six months, every day. The, the barriers would be down, causing traffic to sit in place for about fifteen minutes while no train went by. I promise you that everybody who got stuck in that line every day had a shared common interest in seeing that railroad track get fixed. And so if you have things about a route town like this or, or similar things where you've got common interests with groups of people, this would be a community of interest. One of the things we, besides identifying what is a community of interest and where in town they are, we would want to hear what they want to be grouped together. Uh, so that way they would uh, have one council member who they would have, you know, really good relationship with. Or would they want to be split in two? So they felt like, you know, forty percent of the council would, would have to hear their uh, their issues. Where we see normally the request to be split in two is usually around senior centers where you've got a large, high uh, high frequency voter base. Uh, and very often because they're so big, uh, they want to be split in two. But for most communities of interest. Uh, they want to be kept as one based on their size, but we do want to hear this as well with communities of interest topic. Next slide, please. So some of the, with just to spur the conversation, I certainly don't recommend using the, the uh, neighborhoods app. Uh, our next door app, as far as which neighborhoods, I just wanted to show you here's some that exist in your area. Uh, not a big fan of next door. If you, you can post something beautiful and people will troll you for weeks. Uh, but this is a potential way to say what neighborhoods are around you. Uh, this is just meant for discussion purposes. Next slide, please. So tonight, we want to hear from you on what your neighborhoods and your communities of interest are, how you define them. And, and uh, and then use that to, to frame the discussion around maps. Next slide, please. And then of course, we want to make sure you're aware of all the resources that are available to you. Uh, the citrus heights has set up a redistricting website. You see the page there. You also have the city clerk's email address and phone number. And, 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 and the team there is, is very knowledgeable and extremely helpful. And I'm, I've really had a great time working with them thus far. So with that, I believe we're uh, we're ready to answer questions and, and, and follow the procedure for public hearing.
And Mayor, if I may just briefly go back um, a couple of slides. To the alternate um, schedule that we had proposed. Um, in addition to this, um, I just wanted to mention that we would also propose holding on March third. Um, a public workshop where it would be, um, staff would be available to, you know, provide copies of maps and allow people if they wanted to. Draw a map, um, ask any questions, um, but that is also proposed as part of the alternative schedule is a public workshop on March third.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, so um, at this time I will open the public hearing. And do we have any uh, comments, public comments or speakers?
I do have one uh, written comment um, that I will go ahead. And read. And we received it from Kathy Morris uh, in the Chason Board of Directors. And she states, Chason is a neighborhood association of citrus heights. Eight and nine, our boundaries correspond exactly with the current district two boundaries. Our group is very active with a good participation from all areas, therefore involving the entire district. We believe the current district structure works well and encourage retaining the district two is currently configured. And that concludes the written public comment that we had received. Um, I'm currently not seeing any raised hands from any members of the public on Zoom.
Okay, well. With that, um, I will close uh, the public comment um, in the public hearing. And ask my colleagues, is there any discussion?
Hey, the, uh, question, Mayor. There was mention of mapping tools. I was unable to find those or those up on our website or is that forthcoming, uh, Amy?
Um, we have maps available, um, but we don't.
No, the tools to do the. To do a map.
Um, we don't have the mapping tools as part of this process, this go around with for the. Similar to what we had during the destructing, we do not have it for this process. We'll have printable maps that the public can uh, view. We can print them of all varying sizes.
Um, and then one comment, um, you know, Kathy Morris mentioned that um, district two. It fits uh, Chason really well. I don't think that's true the rest of the uh. City, uh, we, we kind of broke apart our neighborhood associations. Now those were, were based on area rather than. Uh, population, so they don't really mix well. Uh, one thought I had on the uh, for the districts where they don't match well is maybe rethink the whole neighborhood. Structure. Um, I don't know how that would be received by the neighborhoods and I'd have to uh, look for their feedback. But you could easily split each. Uh, council district into two neighborhood associations. So that's just a thought and I'll leave it at that.
Uh, Amy, or, or sorry, Amy, um, Mayor. Seems like we have two things to. Address this evening. One is the hearing dates and then the other one is our comments on. The, the mapping. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
So, um, I. If, I would like to just put out there that I favor. The second um, scenario as far as the scheduling. In large part because I cannot make a, a March third meeting. I have a. A standing commitment on the nights that we don't have city council on Thursdays. So I'm not available that night. So if we could keep the public hearings uh, in the context of our city council meetings. And then do the outreach to the community that night, um, then I could be assured that I could attend all of them.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with keeping. The public hearings uh, during a time that's consistent with our council meetings. So the public is aware and we can really work on focusing on outreach um, in a separate meeting, uh, especially, you know, a special, separate workshop for the community. Um, any other comments from the council members?
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Daniels wants to go ahead.
Nope, go ahead.
Okay, so uh, I, I certainly support uh, both Jeannie and the mayor's. Proposal that uh, I do like the idea of not. Necessarily having to promote a separate meeting for the public hearing. Um, if people are already aware that these are going to be happening during the council meetings, I think that just makes a lot of sense. Um, that we, that everybody can know and to expect these things, these uh, hearings are going to happen. Um, I also would, uh, I, I like the idea of. You know, just adopting our existing. Um, structure for um. Uh, or the, you know, just uh, renewing the maps as they are. Um, that seems really simple. I, my. Fear with that is, is, uh, as I've gone out and campaigned last time. There are many, many, many people that didn't really understand what districts were. And uh, my concern is if we change them, they still. It's going to be even more confusing for that. So I, I would rather, I, I think. Leaving them, them where they are for now would be um, a, a lot, uh, it just. It's a change that we, we just made this, we just did this two years ago. And let people sort of get acclimated to uh, the new district program and what the districts are now. This uh, makes a lot of sense to me. So that's my comment.
And I just want to uh, concur with what the council, our Vice Mayor Schaefer has said. We are. Barely. Aware within the, uh, within the city of the districts at this point. And if, since they are balanced, uh. Why make more work than we need to? I really think that's a great idea. That's just preliminary.
Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just in regards to following up on council member Miller's uh, comments and I'm trying to make sure I understand correctly. I believe when we did this before, there was the ability to create different um. Districts and then obviously you need to know the population of those districts if you draw different lines. Um, is, is that not going to be available? Because I don't know how anybody could. Could work a map. If they didn't have that ability to have the interactive map, tell them the populations of certain areas. If they did make changes, does that make sense? And that is probably an Amy question. I don't know.
With, um, with each map, um, and if the demographer can add to this as well. Um, but each map that's submitted by the public is turned over to our demographer who does. Do an analysis of each map and provides the population data that will go along with each of those maps to determine if they are uh, balanced.
Um, and am I wrong in, in remembering uh, that I thought that was something that you could do as you created a map last time?
Yeah, yeah, that's the mapping tools.
And so how come we don't have that available now?
Um, that is something, it was in uh. An option based on our contract with the demographer, if that's something we wish to purchase, it was an additional um, item. Added to the contract if we had a public participation kits. That people could use that had an Excel spreadsheet, but we do, um, so we didn't, we didn't have that as part of this process with the redistricting. Um, but we were going to provide um, printed maps. It's available on our website that people can download and they can certainly. Um, draw on those, their proposed district lines.
Okay, um, and is it just cost prohibitive then, or you, you're saying there's a cost to it? Um, it, it just seems like it, it, it's a, a very useful tool to anybody that is trying to create. Uh, al- an alternative map.
Um, Councilmember Daniels, I'll.
Thank you.
Help out with this. Uh, that, that tool is available as an option. There is a cost to it. Um, one thing that we could look at and consider is to see how robust the participation is on the March third meeting. And see if there's a lot of community interest in utilizing those tools and seeing if we want to make that available. Uh, the other alternative would be to uh, select that option now from a cost perspective. And um, make that, make that available. Uh, I know there was a lot of.
I, I'm fine with waiting then if it's something that we can come back to if, if it looks like it has enough, uh, if there's a need there, I guess is the way I'll put it.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely monitor that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, I have one, Mayor, I have one last question.
Yes.
Um, our city attorney probably won't like me asking this, but uh, any possibility returning to uh, at large? I know, don't give me that look, Mayor. I just want to know.
Well, I think he may be. You know, city of Santa Monica and there's others that have tried to battle this. I think that is. Um, a, a difficult battle. I think it's an expensive one that they've incurred. Um, so I would say the short answer is, is returning back to at-large voting is. Is, is probably not something you want to entertain. It would be very, we'd likely get challenged and it would be an expensive process that we. Um, in the end would probably not be successful.
That's what I thought you said. Thanks, Ryan.
You're welcome.
I'm, I don't support the districts, that's why. Just wanted to check and see if there's any way to get back there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so um. We need to give some direction to staff here. Um, do I have a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we go with the option that uh, March third is not a special meeting. That it's um, the way it was proposed. And is that enough of a motion moving forward with the other meetings as uh, desired?
Yeah, uh, do we, I'm, I'm looking at the uh. At the item, do we have something to vote on? Is, do we make the, the dates just by consensus or do, or does it require a vote?
I don't think you need a vote. I'll defer to city clerk if she thinks. I think just consensus and direction is what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So I support, sorry.
Go ahead, no, please.
I support the uh, the alternative dates. Coinciding with, with the um, with council.
Looks like we have a consensus. I see a lot of head nods, so there we have it. All right, next item, please.
And I just want to check with our demographer that he had sufficient direction as well, if you had any other additional questions.
I, I, I have sufficient direction. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the next item. Is department reports, number twelve. The subject is annual communications update by the city manager's office.
Good evening, Mayor Middleton and members of city council, Megan Huber, economics development and communications manager for the city. Very excited to give you a department report this evening. Reviewing our year in communications. We are embarking on our third year. Of having a communications practice in uh, house here at. The city and it's a best practice for us to uh, come before you on an annual basis to present the. Metrics that have been generated for the previous year past that. Although quantitative measurement is really important, we also like to underscore the qualitative growth that has been achieved too. That ultimately ladders up to a very important strategic goal here at the city. To enhance community engagement and community pride. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to communications officer Nicole Baxter. To share all of that exciting stuff.
Awesome. Thanks, Megan. And um, thanks council members and Mayor Middleton. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible because I know we're running late, but we are so honored. To have this opportunity to come before you again, and I can't believe it's been a full year since I presented. Um, the last communications year in review. So thank you for this. Bathing right in, as Megan alluded to, all of our work at city hall ladders up to the strategic goals set by our city council. I have them listed here in no priority order. While our communications efforts certainly work to amplify each of these goals, the last one there. Enhance community vibrancy and engagement really, really speaks to the work that we do. So Megan and I have a robust, one of Megan's favorite words, communication strategic plan. Um, that we recently got to put in front of Mr. Feeny. He can attest that it is a binder's worth of information and it really outlines. At all the strategic work that our communication team does. And um, instead of going through that whole binder, um, we'll just summarize by saying that. All of our work really drops into one of these three buckets. So our goal is to provide consistent content. As council will remember, our communication shop is still relatively new, stood up at the end of twenty nineteen. Um, so at the initial onboard, we really worked to get content up on our channels frequently. Uh, with a consistent voice too, and a consistent brand from the city. And the next bucket is to build new channels and methods, um, three of which I'm so excited to cover tonight. And then. The fourth bucket is feedback and responsiveness. This is uh. Really true to all of our work here at citrus heights. We have such um. A focus on feedback and responsiveness and engagement here. So I can't go any further without talking about our pit crew. Um, that's the public information team. The names you see here on the screen are an integral part of our communications efforts. And our consistent content. and our consistent content. So these PIT members take on volunteer roles to serve as a conduit between their departments and divisions through the communications team and out to our public. So they are providing content on a weekly basis, reporting what their teams are working on, what questions they're getting that we can answer in our communications and more. So just have to pause and give a huge shout out to this PIT crew. They are amazing. And they are taking on this role of being on the public information team on top of their day-to-day work. You guys know we're such a lean crew here at City Hall, so it really means a lot to have their support. So then continuing on with that first bucket of consistent communications and consistent content. This past year in 2021, we put together an actual menu, and I couldn't help myself. I had to brand it as like a diner menu, of all the tools in our communications toolkit. And as you can see, they're really built out now. So we're two years into having a communication shop, and this is a menu that we present to each of our department leads, project points of contact and PIT members to show them what exactly we can do for them in their project, communicating it out to all of our different audiences. So we organized it by our communications funnel. So at the top is awareness. If you just want to get your message out to the public, build awareness. Kind of like our redistricting public hearings, we have a bunch of tools for that. If you want to move further down the funnel and you're ready to educate your audience that's aware of what you're working on, we have tools for that. And then dessert, the cherry on top is engagement, getting people to really feel a connection to the city. Sign up for ongoing newsletters, sign up to provide us your feedback with flash vote survey. And so we really feel that this menu is all encompassing of the great work we can provide. So I alluded to this earlier, but we have three huge new initiatives to report on that all came to life in 2021. First and foremost is our Connect Citrus Heights Coalition. This is an exciting group of community members from over 70 different organizations. And I'll go into it a little bit more in the next slide. So that's number one. Number two is we launched our Instagram account in 2021. We had a goal of reaching over 1,000 followers in our first year, and we hit that. So it's really exciting to be on that platform. And number three is City Bot, a new tool powered by artificial intelligence to enable folks to talk and ask their questions of the city 24/7. So diving into these a little bit more, Connect Citrus Heights, hopefully council will recall that this group had a spotlight video during our State of the City address. We meet every other month. As I mentioned, it's over 70 members. This group represents businesses, business groups like the Chaney, ABBA, we have service groups in there, all of our usual players, Kiwanis Rotary, our schools all have representatives, churches, youth sports leagues, our neighborhood areas, our utility partners. So it's, it's one group that comes together and our focus is community connections. That highlighted strategic goals. So last year, the group was formed. Goals, the first one was to create a community calendar, have a one-stop shop for community happenings. So we are so excited that that's up and live. It's citrusheights.net/events. And what's really cool is our Connect members have backend access to this calendar, add their events. So we're a small communication shop. So this really helps with, you know, kind of our overhead work. Load in their own events. It's updated. We are rolling out a getting a plan around it. And so far, it's been really well received by the community and our Connect members. We also have some other goals. The group needs to share resources, so facilitate donations, sharing volunteers, evolving for each other. We really saw that come to light in our January meeting. It was awesome. We also plan and promote each other's events and have hopes of planning and promoting a new event for the group. You know, resources permitted. We looking to increase networking opportunities among our members. Lots of our school representatives are eager to meet with some of the other members and vice versa. And then we want to grow each member's group, their awareness in Citrus Heights. So one great example of this, as I mentioned, was the State of the City Spotlight on the Connect members. And for the sake of time, I won't play it, but please head to our YouTube channel and check it out. It is awesome. And we asked our Connect members what community connection meant to them and really exceeded expectations and gave some, some great video snippets there. That was the first new initiative. The second was Instagram, and we'll talk about that when we talk about our social media. So this next one is City Bot. It is a text your government, chat your government, 24/7 artificial intelligence powered tool. So we launched in October of 2021. Since then, relatively short amount of time, we have had over 1,000 unique residents engage, ask a question, sign up. And we've had 1,184 inquiries sent to the bot. So that would seem like a lot of work to field all those inquiries. What's so cool is that the tool uses the information on the city's website to auto generate answers for those that are engaging with the tool. So of those 1,184, I only had to manually respond to 27%. So 72, about 73% of them were responded to by artificial intelligence. So we're using information that our crew and others have already put out there and really harnessing it to reach our residents when the question pops in their head at 8 o'clock at night while they're laying in bed. They can text this number or hop on the city's website and engage. So if you haven't already, text hello to the number on the screen, 844-954-3556. And you'll get a prompt and you can subscribe. And so the tool's really two-part. You can ask your questions, and then you can also sign up to receive news. This was huge for us. We know that there's a population in Citrus Heights that we're not reaching, and 97% of Americans have a cell phone. So if we can push our news directly to folks' cell phone that we know they've got in their pocket and got on them all the time, that's just huge for, for building connection and building trust and there when they need us. So we're super excited about it. It is called Hello CH, so check that out if you haven't already. Now moving into the social media side of things, so launched Instagram, huge resource for reaching slightly younger demographic and a little bit more even males to females in our population that we're reaching. Facebook skews, our average Facebook audience number is a 55-year-old female. And on Instagram, it's a 33-year-old male or female tied for our average audience there. So so great to be reaching them, so great to be over 1,000 followers on the platform. And in total, 2021 brought us over 1,700 new followers to all of our social media channels combined. That number might not seem big when we think about our overall population. But let me tell you, 2020 was the year to get on social media and the year to follow your local governments. So if 2021 brought us 17, you know, 1,700 more than 2020, I think we're in a really good spot. And overall, that brings our social following to nearly 32,000 people. And so that's a 16.5% increase. And again, that's competing against the year of COVID when everyone was really getting online and following. So see our growth continue consistently, consistently like that means that our 2020 numbers weren't a fluke. People are finding value in the news that we're putting out there. They want to follow us. They want to get to know us. That's the goal. That's the dream. So super exciting social numbers there. I'll fly through this. Last year, I presented on our newsletter numbers. Just wanted to circle back on those again this year. We remain consistently outshining industry standards for government agencies in both our open rates and our click-through rates. I'm so, you know, nearly doubling the number for open rates and almost, you know, 10 times more than the click-through rate. So again, an indicator that they like our content. They want to connect with us. So this is my last slide. I think it really shows the value of having a communication shop, and our PIT crew certainly contributes to this. In 2019, our communications shop launched in November. But I did go back when I was new in my role and tried to pull together all of the media, what we call earned impressions. So that's anytime we pitched something and got on the local media. So you can see there in that blue bar, just shy of 2.5 million media impressions. And with our shop fully stood up and in place, our efforts have really skyrocketed our reach, up over 10 million media impressions. You combine that with those social numbers, those newsletter numbers that I just presented, and we're at nearly 12 million impressions a year. And while I geek out about the numbers and the metrics, and I think it's really cool to show that growth and consistency, what this really ultimately means is that we are reaching more residents than ever before in a time when I feel like they really need it. So that means a lot to me. It means a lot to our PIT crew. Means the work, the hard work of our city council, all the projects our city staff are working on, all the wonderful things in our community and the important information we need to put out, it's reaching a bigger audience than ever before. So that's kind of the takeaway I wanted to leave this presentation on. And with that, I think I'm at 13 minutes, so hopefully I, I didn't put anyone to sleep, but thank you again for this opportunity.
Nicole, Megan, you guys, as usual, do great work. Those are astounding numbers, and we are very, very impressed with what you've done, you know, in such a short amount of time. That's absolutely astounding.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Just have one question for Nicole. That was a great presentation, by the way, and very exciting to see those numbers because I think that is the way we need to really connect with the masses. But I just have one question regarding your presentation is, who gets to bed at 8 o'clock?
Not us.
Okay.
I just have a-
Oh, go ahead.
Have a quick comment. Nice job, Nicole. I actually, while you were talking, got onto City Bot and sent a couple of texts to see how it worked. Worked very, very well. One of the questions I asked is, where do I get sandbags? That's something I hear often. And then the other one I asked is, what is my neighborhood association meeting? So both questions were answered very, very well. Well done. Problem is storms happen on the weekends, which is a little bit of an issue for getting sandbags sometimes because that's when people ask me, it's on Saturday morning, and there's a storm coming. We're kind of stuck. Thank you very much. Great job.
Okay, great. Next item, please.
Our next item is city manager items.
Thank you, thank you, Amy. Madam Mayor and Council, I do have a few updates. And first of all, I want to acknowledge and recognize Nicole and Megan's excellent presentation there. And boy, really impressive communications work being done here. I want to echo the comments that Mayor and Council made on that. If I could go to the next slide here. I did want to make a few announcements. One, next week, we are going to be reopening our City Hall lobby to serve the public in person. We have developed tools during the course of the pandemic that have really provided for some excellent service for remote service, and a lot of folks have gotten used to those tools. And we're still going to be providing those tools and that online remote service that we've become accustomed to. But in addition to that, some things you can't replace being in person for to, you know, talk to somebody and, you know, whether it's going over a plan or going deeper on a question. So we will have our lobby reopening February 14th, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. The Omicron wave that has been dissipating in the trends that we're seeing statewide in the we feel that we can open City Hall safely. Looking forward to getting open next week. We will be communications team and our PIT crew to update the lobby signage and the website info accordingly. If I could go to the next slide, please. We have the COVID-19 vaccination clinic that's going to be happening on February 16th. Sacramento County Public Health will be administering the vaccinations, and it is going to be held in the from 10 to 16th. So wanting to get the word out on that. If I could go to the next slide, please. This is very exciting. Consistent with the city council direction we received relative to the ARPA funding, we have our team, and I really want to recognize Megan Huber, Bill Zanoni, as well as Raj Prasad, on really standing up this program very quickly to serve our small business community. And this is the council-directed Small Business COVID-19 Recovery Grant Program. There's going to be a webinar on Monday, February 14th for businesses to receive information and answer questions about the grant program. We're going to open the applications on February 24th for a 30-day period. And that's going to give us some terrific data to see how much demand there is for the program and what the subscription rate is. And, you know, also answer any questions we, you know, receive from businesses and be able to bring that data back to council at a future meeting to talk about the, the program and hopefully talk about the successes of the program. So we're definitely encouraging local businesses to prepare and read and participate in the webinar. And our website is now live with information on the Small Business Grant Recovery Program. Think if we could go to the next slide, please. Strategic planning. One of the important things that the council does is the strategic planning workshop where we work on your goals and objectives. There is, on the calendar, we had a March 1 strategic planning workshop that was being held. Given that I am new in my position and I'm wanting to learn more about community needs, you know, hear more from residents, talk to the council about community needs and desires, I'm looking to postpone the strategic planning workshop to May 10th so we can go a little more in-depth and have it be a little bit more participatory or a lot bit more participatory. So we do have May 10th on the calendar. We're moving the date from March 1st to May 10th. And that'll run from, starting at 8:30 in the morning on May 10th. And that's a multi-hour workshop where we go deep on the goals and objectives. The good news is staff are on track to hit the strategic objectives that have been established at the workshop. And, you know, we'll look to provide an update as an informational item on where we're at on those even ahead of that May 10th meeting. So looking forward to that strategic planning workshop. And I think a couple of other things that should be noted, especially as it relates to strategic planning workshop and kind of reopening City Hall is it's looking like we're going to be able to do the strategic planning workshop in person, given some of the changes that are coming out of the county and the state. We're anticipating on February 16th next week that the county will lift the public health order mandating that public meetings be held remotely. So hopefully we'll be back in these chambers, holding meetings and inviting the community back into the chamber to have these meetings with the public instead of being on Zoom. And then in addition to that, we understand the, there's going to be some changes to the masking mandate too for indoor masking. And my understanding of it, and of course, we'll wait till the order comes out, but that for those that have been vaccinated, they'd have the opportunity to remove their mask if they feel safe doing so indoors. And so that's something that we're going to hear more about next week too. So it looks like some, some changes in order. Reopening City Hall, getting back to meetings in person. And, you know, connecting more with the community, which I'm sure we're all excited about and will be welcoming. And so that concludes my remarks, and thank you.
Thank you for that update. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
I see, I see a bunch of head shakes now. So we'll adjourn our meeting at 8:23. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
It's 8:20. I gotta go to bed.